I guess we better get the show on the road. How are my favorite council members?
Awesome, how are you doing?
Good, Mayor.
Council?
Yes.
Council members?
You've got your lovely daughter, lovely wife here tonight?
Right.
Good evening, my back to call the October 14th, 2014 Longmont City Council meeting to or to order, this is a regular session, could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a quorum.
Okay, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
The only national speaker at first call public invited to be heard will need to have his or her name to the list outside the council chambers, only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak during the regular hearing items this evening or at final call public invited to be heard. So now we need to, uh, need a motion to approve the minutes from September, Council member Edison.
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the minutes from September 23rd as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero. Valerie, are there any agenda additions or revisions?
Yes, Mayor Coombs, wanted to bring your attention to ordinance 2014-65, which is additional appropriations ordinance was added after the agenda went out, it will be on consent as item 9T, and then there was a revised letter, I believe was placed, was sent out this afternoon and placed on your desk, um, they get for 9P, which is the oil and gas letter, and you'll be voting on that version on consent agenda.
Okay. It's a report from city manager.
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay, so now we have a proclamation designating October 20th through the 26th as Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont. Sarah Levison is the Longmont City Council member of the Colorado Municipal League Board will be here to accept the proclamation, and I'll go ahead and read it now. A proclamation recognizing October 20 to 26, 2014 as Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont, Colorado, whereas municipal government is the government closest to the most citizens and aligned with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of many responsibilities, and whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public service and their benefits, and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week is a time to recognize the important role played by municipal government in our lives, and whereas the Colorado Municipal League's member cities and towns have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of projects and information, and whereas Colorado Cities and Towns Week offered an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Colorado that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore, by Dennis Alcoy, Mayor, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim October 20th through 26, 2014 as Colorado Cities and Towns Week in Longmont, and I encourage all municipal governments to actively participate in Colorado Cities and Towns Week. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate the proclamation being read into the record, and I'd also like to recognize Lisa White, who's a CML staff member who came up with the idea Cities and Towns Week, it's the first Cities and Towns Week, many other cities are doing activities, celebrations, open houses, and I'm glad that we're participating also, so I'd like to thank you on behalf of the Municipal League Executive Board, but also thanks to Lisa White, who's really helped the membership get excited about this idea, and there'll be some small segments running on Channel Eight, CML has produced a number of short videos talking about different types of operations that Cities and Towns do to add value for residents every day, so take a minute to look at those if you can, thank you. Okay, I guess it's time for first call approach invited to be heard, first person on our list is Wendy Ness Zin, Ness Zin Zer, thanks for your.
Got it, Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Wendy Napsiger here on behalf of the Longmont Area Economic Council, I'd like to read this statement of support, the Longmont Area Economic Council exists for the purpose of fostering the retention and creation of quality jobs in the Longmont area. Improved infrastructure to support our existing employer base and those new companies coming into the community is very important to the continued success and growth of our employers. As such, the Board of Directors of LAEC voted on October 13th of 2014 to support the extension of the existing three-quarter cent street fund sales and use tax, recognizing the importance of our street maintenance, rehabilitation, and improvements to Longmont's street and transportation system. These improvements will continue to allow our employers to operate and grow in the community while providing important jobs for our citizens, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christian Burbaker from Silver Creek High School.
My name is Tabby Aziz from Silver Creek High School.
My name is Mohammed Aziz from Silver Creek High School.
And I am Danny Bagley from Skyline High School, and I am chairman and speaker for youth council, so today I come to council to challenge you guys for the annual Halloween for the hungry challenge. Um, today, youth council would like to challenge you guys to participate in this year's Halloween for the hungry. In 2013, city council collected 52 cans of food and youth council collected 311 cans, which came to a total of 363 cans of food, or 242 pounds. Our goal this year is to double that, 600 cans of food is this year's goal. From October 26th to the first is the collection times, this event is for the community food of Longmont, and we would like to challenge you guys and we hope you guys participate, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I am just shocked at the deplorable situation of our youth, what kind of parents does this young lady have to show up and offer such public disobedience and just embarrassment to our locally elected officials, so, right, I think you need to go home and have a serious conversation with your parents, young lady, that's just inappropriate, and I do have a council, you know, and if I have to buy the cans myself, bring it, so, good luck, Danny Bagley, and the rest of your cohorts.
Council member Christensen.
I do think the seven of us could come up with more than 15 cans of food, so.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, all right, well, still, um, so, is there a place where we can find out what they actually need, what kinds of food they would prefer, and, uh, there is, okay, good, thank you.
Well, we asked the fitness shows to, um, let me see if I have any, so he can lose two contests in a row, so we better step it up, so, I said, next up is, uh, Tamika Hayward.
Hello, uh, this is my first time coming here, I'm kinda confused about what I do right now, I thought I asked questions, so I came up with a question.
Ms. Hayward, could we get your name and address for the rest?
Tamika Hayward, and it's, uh, 14th Avenue, in Longmont, um, well, with things rolling around, one of my biggest concerns are with the street cleaning, uh, last year I was just slipping and sliding all over the place, and, um, I never saw any snow pile trucks, so I was just wondering if the city was going to put forth forth efforts in keeping the roads clean this year, that's all. I don't know.
Yes.
Tell me about it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Take the gamble.
Say yes.
My name is Stantol, I'm a resident, longtime resident, so city of Longmont, um, my address here is the city of Longmont, and, um, the reason I'm here is that, um, if, if somebody has been following the paper or, uh, had seen me talk a while back here, I was basically arrested at the city manager's office for asking for a lawful, um, he, he, hearing because I had a vehicle that was towed illegally by the city. Uh, I'm not going to talk about just those issues, the, the one issue I'm going to mention, and I gave you a piece of paper last time I was here, and what it is, is that the city is collecting a kickback on, on these toes. Now, I haven't been, my vehicle was accused of being a junk vehicle, um, you know, because it was supposedly in violation of a state law and a municipal code, and they're sort of combined together, and they're go to municipal court, that can only handle municipal court issues and not the state issue, so really, it's unconstitutional ordinance, um, so, but the issue I'm going to mention is that my vehicle got towed, and I was forced to pay a fine to the city of Longmont about, it was, it's a kickback that the city has arranged with the tow truck companies. Essentially, and I was talking to the city manager about this, is that that's a felony, that is felony extortion, because I am not being cited for anything, and it's basically collecting a fine without any sort of due process, so, I would like to have, you know, the, the, a lot of unlawful toes have been instigated against myself, and if, this originally started because I was complaining about the judge not having jury trials, and, basically illegally denying jury trials, and I was retaliated against, and I've been retaliated with my property being towed, I've been retaliated with being forced out of my home, and, you know, I've been retaliated for coming before council, and I think this really needs to end, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Dickmore, I'm longtime resident of Longmont, um, and I'm here to talk to you guys about curbside composting, um, a couple years ago I heard about.
Can you give us your address?
Uh, I live on Broad Street in Longmont, um, a couple years ago I heard about an initiative that EcoCycle is part of called COOL, and that stands for compostable organics out of landfills, so the goal is to keep compostable things out of landfills, well, I'm an environmental scientist, so that sounded good to me, um, and I've been doing my part for a long time by backyard composting, um, but the issue is that there's a lot of stuff that you can't really compost effectively in your backyard compost bin, um, I've got this little water earlier, this cup is compostable, that's great, but if I stick this in my backyard composting, it's going to take forever to break down, and there's actually quite a lot of materials like that, that are compostable, but they're not really, um, they don't work very well in a backyard composter, so that's where, um, curbside composting comes in, something that I'm really interested in, um, it's really worthwhile to keep, um, these compostable materials out of our landfills, and curbside composting is a way to make that happen, um, anyone like me who has a backyard composter and has materials that won't work back there can take their items to the Martin Street facility, there's a big composting bin there, um, but realistically, you know, that's not diverting very much at all of what's possible to divert in Longmont's waste stream, um, you know, most residents aren't going to take the time to take their materials over there, even someone as invested in the process as me, um, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of residents who don't have the ability to have a backyard composter at all, they don't have a yard, they live in a multi-unit, um, housing place, or they're just not interested in doing it themselves, so, um, Longmont last surveyed its residents about curbside composting in the 2010 customer satisfaction survey, and a majority of residents were in favor of it, um, over a third of residents were strongly in favor of it, um, so I think that this is something that Longmont residents are interested in and would support, um, even with a small fee, that was part of the question, would you, would you be willing to accept a small fee for this, and people said yes, um, I think Longmont has been a leader in a lot of ways with its utilities, with the wire utilities and the electric, electric utilities, um, and we're not really a leader on the curbside composting, Boulder, obviously, Boulder has had it for a long time, um, Louisville has it, now Lafayette has it, um, I think it's really time for Longmont to step up and bump this up in priority and bring curbside composting to the city, thank you.
Thank you.
Kay Fessinger, 2199 Creek Side Road, Longmont, I see that there was a replacement on the letter to the Oil and Gas Task Force, uh, I don't know what's in that because I haven't seen it, so I'm not sure if everything that I had to say will apply, um, the first thing I'd like to say about, uh, about this letter is, as with the Hippocratic Oath, I am concerned that we first do no harm, I would suggest that we be silent on the issue of takings, whether or not a ban is a takings, especially in the case of Longmont, is a matter for the court to decide when a suit is filed and tried, as currently written, the letter smacks of a compromise before the fact, um, secondly, I would replace the sentence that begins with, while the courts, and I would replace it with the following, as the court said in a recent Longmont decision, this state and its courts have a history of placing the interests of oil and gas companies over the health and safety of communities and citizens, this task force should be taking clear steps to reverse this upside-down priority and recommend that in any conflict analysis, it is the health of our communities that take precedent over everything else, uh, and, and other, um, and as in other land use decision-making, it's local citizens who are in the best position to decide what is best for the community. This language was suggested by one of our attorneys on the van lawsuit and endorsed by others of our attorneys, since Longmont has not completed the negotiations with the state or the industry on the reg suit, nor has the final document in place before the city council with the public having an opportunity to respond, the reg lawsuit remains on the court's advocate to be litigated, nothing should be offered at this time that could be construed as the city of Longmont's compromised settlement of the reg lawsuit or places a statement on record that should come back to haunt the city and citizens while pursuing a citizen-approved charter amendment than in the courts. I can understand why the municipalities that passed local ballot measures would like to have a say in all of this to the task force, however, I question whether Longmont should submit any communication at all, certainly not one where the primary intent may be primarily to pander to the task force. Furthermore, if submission of a letter to the task force may have some benefit, I would recommend that each of the communities mentioned in the council communication, one draft its own letter, since the measures passed in each of these communities are not monolithic, and two, be in no hurry to submit a letter, the task force has barely gotten underway and will not complete its work until the end of February, February 2015, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Okay, that ends first call public invited to be heard.
Mayor Coombs, the first item on your second reading public hearings is ordinance 2014-51, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014, we do not have a formal staff presentation, but Teresa is here to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, um, I don't see any questions from council, so I'll now open up the public hearing on ordinance 2014-51, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Council member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I would move ordinance 2014-51.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is ordinance 2014-52, a bill for an ordinance approving the disconnection of a portion of the Bachmann annexation from the city of Longmont, generally located on County Road 20 and a half east of County Line Road, and we do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but Ava Wepeth-Jewski is here to answer questions.
Any questions from council before I open it up, the public hearing? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing on ordinance 2014-52, is there anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on 2014-52, or 2014-52, council member Levison.
Mayor, I'd like to move 2014-52.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2014-53, a bill for an ordinance amending section 15.05.080 of the Longmont Municipal Code on off-street parking and loading, and again, we do not have a staff presentation on this, Phil Greenwald is in the audience to answer questions.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance 2014-53, is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-53, council member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I did have a question, um, on page number seven, which is our page 95, um, under E2A, it says driveway shall not be used as points of ingress and egress for individual parking spaces, driveway shall be placed such that loading and unloading activities shall not hinder vehicle ingress and egress, and I was curious, driveway shall not be used as points of ingress or egress for individual parking spaces, and yet, that is pretty much what a driveway is for. So I was confused about that, if you could clarify that for me, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Phil Greenwald, transportation planner with the city's Planning and Development Services, Mayor Coombs and council member Finley, this is specifically, um, talking about non-residential zoning districts, so it's talking about a driveway that's to a, to a business, and so we're trying to keep those as not being individual points for loading and activity, or loading and unloading activities, um, so it's not the same as the residential piece of it, if that makes any sense, or if that helps clear that up, um, we're talking about, we're talking about not having a driveway being one point for just a parking space, one parking space, one driveway for one parking space, sorry if that helps.
Council member Santos.
Thank you, we had our public hearing correct, Mayor?
Yes.
So I remove ordinance 2014-53.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance 2014-54, a bill for an ordinance amending section 15.05.140 of the Longmont Municipal Code on outdoor lighting, again, no formal staff presentation, I believe Joni Marsh is here if you have any questions.
I do have a question.
Council member Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, under F, General Regulations Number Two, it says no blinking, flashing, or fluttering lights or other illuminated device that has a changing light intensity, brightness of color is permitted in any zone, is there a reason for that?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Finley, so yeah, typically, we do not allow that type of flashing light because it's, A, it's a nuisance lighting, and then if you're adjacent to a public right-of-way, that tends to be too distracting for drivers. So this is a holdover that we've kept, simply to make sure that we don't have nuisance lighting going on either in residential or commercial areas. You know, sometimes we get folks who want to do a special event and put some lights up in the area, and we can, as part of that, allow some of that as part of a special event. But in general, we try to keep anything that would be distracting to driving or perhaps a nuisance that would then become a code complaint, which is what we've seen in the past with things like that.
So this has been on the books for some time?
Yeah, so this is not a change.
Okay, I was just curious about that.
I don't see any other questions, so I'll open it up for public hearings. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 2014-54? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-54. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd move ordinance 2014-54.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Bagley, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is ordinance, actually, two ordinances, ordinance 2014-55, which is a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H32A to Dean Holomba, and ordinance 2014-56, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance brand Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H27 to Deplane LLC. And you can hold one public hearing for both of these ordinances if you like.
Okay. See any questions about ordinances 2014-55 or 56? All right, I'll open up the public hearing for both ordinances, 2014-55 and 56. Is anybody from the public who'd like to speak on either one of these two ordinances at this time? Actually, Gordon Pedro signed up to speak.
I think he's on the CDBG public hearing. I might have put him on the wrong one, I apologize if I did.
All right, you put him on the wrong flip. All right. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-55 and 56. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move ordinance 2014-55.
All right, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd move ordinance 2014-56.
Okay, let's vote. That passes seven to zero.
Your next item is Presentation of Funding Recommendations for 2015 Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Program, and Affordable Housing Funding, and Public Hearing for Citizen Input Regarding Proposed Funding. Kathy Fedler will start this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kathy Fedler, CDBG Coordinator. So tonight, we're here to hold the public hearing and present the recommendations from the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board for the 2015 Funding, CDBG Home and Affordable Housing Funding. The Technical Review Group for the Affordable Housing Fund reviewed projects and made recommendations to the Housing Advisory Board, and then that is what is going to be presented to you tonight. A couple things to note, which was included in your communication, is that after you guys set the budget in July, June, July, we had some additional funding that became available, so we did throw that into the mix. So there's about $143,000 when we reconciled with Treasury in the middle of the year that was available to be reallocated, had been accumulating from previous years. $19,150 that was allocated for a project in 2014 was returned because that project is not going to move forward. And then we did do an adjustment to the possible Section 108 loan repayment, because we did get some direction that we're not allowed to set aside or use for payment any more than 20% of our CDBG grant. So that, an adjustment was made to that, which freed up some funds. I think we had set aside $130,000, and it had to go down to about $116,000. All of that funding, additional funding, was in the CDBG fund. The home budget stayed the same, and the Affordable Housing Fund budget stayed the same from what you approved earlier in the year. The recommendations for funding are to continue to fund the housing rehab programs at levels that they were previously at, continue to support homeownership training, and ongoing housing counseling. In the housing arena, two projects were recommended for funding. One is the refinance of the suites, the Longmont Housing Authority Suites Project, which, if you remember, is considered to be a housing-first program. They do house homeless folks, as well as very hard-to-house people that do not have a lot of income, so that is a vital project in our community that is really providing at least 72 units of housing for very, very low-income folks. The other housing project that was recommended for funding is, again, for the Longmont Housing Authority, but they're actually acquiring a vacant land parcel that they will then hold until Habitat is ready to use it, and then they will sell it to Habitat. So that's being recommended for funding. The other thing I want to point out is the Housing Authority did request about $2 million in funds to start to acquire land for upcoming projects, or projects for the future, and do a land banking program. The Technical Review Group in particular wasn't prepared to blanket give them funding to go out and buy land, but said that if they come back on a project-by-project basis, that they would come together at a moment's notice and take a look at the project and make a recommendation to the Housing Advisory Board, and we could then bring it to council at that time. So that's what will move forward with that, and there could be a couple of projects that do come forward fairly quickly. Also being recommended, oh, I should, I guess I should say, on the suites refinance project, we're actually proposing CDBG funds, home funds, and affordable housing funds in that. They really need about $1 million to refinance that project. Those three sources of funds that we have available total about $652,000. They are prepared to go out and find additional funding, but it probably will be in the form of a loan, and it would be very helpful, again, because of the low income of those residents, if the funding could be in the form of a grant. So we have been talking with the home consortium about moving to a more regional approach in allocating those funds, and there's a couple of different reasons for that. First of all, that was kind of the original intent when we first started to form the home consortium, was to look at things more regionally, and if there was a project in one community that would serve multiple communities, to put the funding towards that project. Because we do not really have anything that would meet those needs when the program started, we were funding individual community projects at $100,000, $50,000 per pot. The problem with that is home funds are extremely difficult to use, and they have a lot of ongoing monitoring requirements. So the more home funds that you can put into a project, the better, because then you have really good support in that project, and you can monitor that project once, ongoing, for one project, as opposed to ongoing monitoring for five projects that have little bits of money in them. The other thing with the home funds is, once you put home money in, you can't add home funds, and so the period of affordability is over. So if you put in $50,000 to a project, and there's a 10-year period of affordability, you can't go back in in five years and add additional funding. That's all that you can do. So if you go ahead and fund it solidly upfront, then you don't have a need to go back in and fund that. So what we'll be looking at is if we do a regional allocation process for the home funding, and that would come back to you, because we will have to amend the IGA that we have around the home consortium. So we're not asking you to make a decision about that tonight. But if it does move forward, the suites project would probably be the first project funded under that regional scenario. And if that does happen, that's good for the project, but on the backside, then we probably wouldn't get another project funded for four or five years. So it's a trade-off. But we will be bringing that back to council in a separate, whole separate item. So the other project's being recommended for funding is $25,000 for the in-between to provide air conditioning units at their new facility. They have some folks out there that have some disabilities that could use some air conditioning units to make their lives easier, so that was a pretty small project. The LDDA, for the first time in several years, has requested funding to do a street skate project on the 100 and 200 block, which would bring that section of Main Street into, so it'd look very similar to what's happening above Third Avenue, so it would be a more cohesive look to the Main Street combo sites. That would be funded partially with grant funds from the 2015, as well as about $30,000 in programming, kind of a little bit less than that, that they have been sitting on for a number of years, that would get that money spent as well. $10,000 for the R Center to continue their rent deposit for homeless, working homeless individuals, called their jobs-to-home program, and then the set aside for the 108 loan repayment. This would be a total of about $1.3 million in total funding between the three funding sources, and it would leverage about $9.8 million in private investment for these projects, so bringing about $11 million, $11.2 million into the community in total. If these projects move forward, if your recommendation is to move forward with these, the next step is that it would go into the action plan, the 2015 proposed action plan for the home consortium communities. We would do a 30-day comment period, probably the month of November, and then come back for another public hearing for final approval, and let you know if there were any comments received during that time period. And then the goal would be to get the consolidated plan and the action plan submitted to HUD around the first of the year, sometime in December or the first of the year. I guess that is most of what I wanted to say. I do want to thank the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board and the Technical Review Group, both, which are volunteer boards, and they gave up a lot of time, and they really did a pretty good and thorough analysis, and had a lot of great discussion. So we really appreciate all the hard work that they do. So I'd be happy to answer questions, or you can go right into the public hearing, whichever you prefer.
See if you have any questions, Kathy. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinance.
It's not an ordinance, it's on the CDBG program, home program, and affordable housing funding.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this item at this point? Gordon? Oh.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, and city council members and city staff. I'm Diane Groff. I live in 819 Sumner Street, and I have been a volunteer on the Technical Review Group. And first off, we are very blessed in our community to have such wonderful staff and expertise, and the time that they spend in educating citizen volunteers on the process. And it does take on a life of its own, and there's a lot of twists and turns, and it's amazing what can be leveraged for the betterment of our community. And I just want to say thank you for their expertise, and to support the recommendations that we're making.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
I'm Councilor Gordon Pedro, 20639 Falcon Drive, Longmont. I'm here to support the proposed CDBG home and affordable housing fund budget, particularly where the budget supports affordable housing programs. As you know, our affordable housing needs are significant in our community. We cannot rely on the federal funds to adequately address these needs. Therefore, I also encourage you, in the future, to identify a realistic local revenue stream to meet the needs of a broad range of housing opportunities for those who live in and work in our community. If we encourage and subsidize jobs without adequate housing opportunities, we force environmentally damaging commutes. These commutes also cause wear and tear on our streets, and they cause real wear and tear on the commuters, our workers. So therefore, I support this proposal tonight, hope you adopt it, and I really want to encourage you to keep working on the longer-term local revenue stream for addressing affordable housing. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Harry Benjamin. I live at 621 Gay Street, and I'm here to support, again, the recommendations that you guys have looked at tonight about housing, and to encourage you, again, to think about the bigger picture of what we're looking at, which is what kind of Gordon was talking about. And kind of at the get-go, one of the things that may be helpful is just how we think about this whole affordable housing thing. And I think oftentimes, when we think of workforce housing, affordable housing, subsidized housing, whatever label we put on that type of housing that we start planning for and thinking about, it's often about poor folks, right? Folks that can't quite make it. And a lot of years ago, I wrote a guest editorial for the camera down the street, and it talked about where housing subsidy dollars go. And if you look at the total subsidies, and this is a long time ago, so the numbers have changed, total subsidies this big, subsidies for poor people this big. The mortgage interest subsidy far outweighs the subsidies that go into lower-income people. So justice from a perspective of equity and values, and how we think about this conversation when we get into it, please keep that in mind. Second point is, it's often been talked about, if we build more upper-end housing, it'll trickle down and open up opportunities at lower levels of housing, lower-cost housing. And one of the things I try to keep up with, there's an outfit called the Joint Center for Housing Studies of Harvard University. Once a year, and I've shared this with some of you guys who I've met with, they put out a great report, and it's pretty unbiased when you look at who sits on the commission that drives this thing. And what it says here around that issue of if we build upper-end housing, contrary to popular wisdom, the filtering of properties from higher to lower rents over time has not replenished the supply of lower-income housing. In fact, losses due to rising rents are a major drain on the low-cost inventory. For every two units that moved down to the lower-cost category between 99 and 2009, 10 years, three moved up into the higher-rent categories. And that resulted in a net loss of 8.7% of the lower-income housing stock over that decade. So as you guys think about this bodacious question, and start thinking about strategies, keep in mind that building up here is not going to help folks down here. So thanks a bunch for working on this. It's going to take a lot of time and energy.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this portable housing issue? All right, well, it's the recommendation. The CDBG program and home program.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council. I'm Edwina Salazar. I'm the executive director of the R Center at 303 Atwood. I want to thank the Housing and Human Services Board for recommending the $10,000 for our jobs-to-home program. We, on a yearly basis, are able to stabilize the housing for 16 homeless people who are working, who are really trying working, who are really trying to become self-sufficient and to be contributing members of our community. However, I do need to say that it gets harder and harder for them and for the Our Center to help facilitate them finding stable housing. They get on lists of many people who are waiting for the affordable housing that's available in the apartments. So it's taking us longer to help those folks get into stable housing. I also want to commend the Housing and Human Services Board for the recommendation of the partnership with LHA and with the Habitat for Humanity for Future Housing. I think that's a wonderful start. And of course, I echo the two previous speakers about us continuing to move forward with affordable housing. We see the results of the lack of it every day at the Our Center and the difficulty that people are having staying in this community, working in this community. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilmember Christiansen?
Just to add on something to what Gordon Pedro had to say, when you, also when your job isn't in town and you have to commute because we don't have enough jobs, then the money that you spend on groceries and other items tends to be where you work, because at the end of a long, hard day, you think, "Oh, I'll just get the groceries here and get all that stuff done, and then I can go home." And so it also drains our city. I mean, the interplay between jobs and affordable housing is really critical for us to address. Thank you.
Glad to point out that their recent LAEC meeting, they had some demographic data showing that how, over just a matter of a few years, the number of people that lived in Longmont and worked in Longmont was at like 45%. Now it's down to like 28%. So we are really seeing that there's a lot of people that have a hard time, that even have jobs that are living in our town. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I move that we approve the recommendations in option one.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Let's vote.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. You almost jumped right over me. I'll vote anyway, though, before I make my comment. I guess the question I have is, I mean, I've got several, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with all of the comments of folks who are advocating for affordable housing. Like, for example, I don't believe exclusionary zoning is the way to go. I don't think that it's possible to always meet demand for something that's being given below market price. I think economically, that's impossible. However, I also believe that we need to address this issue, even though I don't think that I'm going to agree with everything that's suggested. Nevertheless, my question is, so we had a meeting where we talked, you know, we talked about what we thought about affordable housing, and then until tonight, I guess I'm a little unclear on what we should do as council, meaning I think we should continue to debate and discuss. And unless we have a plan for debating, discussing, or setting a deadline, because that stimulates progress, I don't think we'll ever be able to address the affordable housing issue. So I'm not making a suggestion as to what the solution should be, but if we're going to come up with a policy or address this, we should probably have a plan for how we're going to approach it. So my question is, is there currently a meeting, retreat, memo, survey, staff members designated to address? What's the plan?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Bagley, so even as today, we were talking about this and what direction we're moving. So my thought is to prepare, and I intend to prepare, and I'm really sorry it's taken so long, an information item back to you that would address how, from the direction we got at the meeting, the last meeting, what are our next steps and where are we going from here? So it's probably a combination of pulling in some experts to take a look at some of the best practices and to provide some information back to us, especially around some of our regulatory requirements, what things say in the comprehensive plan, where we might want to make changes there, what's in the zoning code, where we might want to make changes there, as well as our ongoing programs. And then combined with some input from the Workforce Housing Task Force members, maybe some additional stakeholders or the public, but I do intend to bring that back in an info item to get some feedback, is this the direction that we should go? And hopefully, we can have it wrapped up, I'm hoping, in a couple of months, so after the first of the year, to bring something more specific back. It might be a little difficult with the holidays coming up to try and pull that all together, but that would be the goal, to really have some good feedback and direction that would then feed into the comprehensive plan update that's going to be happening, as well as, you know, taking a better look at what we've got going on as well.
Perfect, then we'll look forward to your informational item. Thanks.
Glad to take this opportunity to sing Kathy's praises as she is talking about that issue, working with CDBG. She is also leading a significant issue on CDBG DR, not only for Longmont, but really the entire county, and she's really taking the lead initiative. So it's amazing to see what Kathy's been able to do, and I just wanted to sing her praises a little bit and say thank you at the same time for the work that she's been doing.
Thank you.
No. Let's vote. Here, passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs, are you ready for the consent agenda? It's a long, it's a long one.
It's a long one.
Okay.
Let's go forward.
Item 9A, ordinance 2014-57, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Longmont, Colorado Storm Drainage Revenue Bonds, Series 2014, and pledging the storm drainage revenues and certain other revenues of the city for the payment of the bonds. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for October 28th. Item 9B is ordinance 2014-58, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 3.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Personnel Rules to add the day after Thanksgiving as a city holiday. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for October 28th. Item 9C is ordinance 2014-59, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city to amend the lease of real property known as Vansbram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel to CAG International, Inc., doing business as Elite Aviation. Public hearing and second reading of the ordinance scheduled for October 28th. Item 9D is ordinance 2014-60, a bill for an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 4.60 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Golf Fees. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for October 28th. Item 9E is two ordinances. Ordinance 2014-61, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the City of Longmont for the year 2014 to pay budgeted city expenses for the 2015 fiscal year. Item 9, what is this? 9E2 is ordinance 2014-62, a bill for an ordinance fixing and levying taxes upon the real and personal property within the Longmont Downtown Development Authority District for the year 2014 to pay budgeted expenses of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority for the 2015 fiscal year. Item 9E3 is ordinance 2014-63, a bill for an ordinance adopting the budget for the City of Longmont for the year 2015. And ordinance 9E4 is ordinance 2014-64, a bill for an ordinance making appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2015. All of these ordinances have a public hearing and second reading scheduled for October 28th. Item 9F is Resolution 2014-89, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Colorado Department of Natural Resources, Division of Parks and Wildlife, for fishing-for-fun grant funding for Golden Pond's fishery improvements. Item 9G, Resolution 2014-90, authorizing an agreement between the city and Black Fox Parkway Associates LLC for the purchase of real property for Ken Pratt and Main Street Intersection Improvement Project. Item 9H is two resolutions. First one is Resolution 2014-91, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado for a community development block grant disaster recovery housing grant agreement for down payment and temporary rental assistance. And also Resolution 2014-92, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado for a community development block grant disaster recovery housing assistance agreement for housing repairs. Item 9I is Resolution 2014-93, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for a grant to address domestic and dating violence. Item 9J is Resolution 2014-94, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Public Safety for a grant supporting restorative justices' practices in schools. Item 9K, Resolution 2014-95, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a grant supporting enhanced enforcement of DUI laws. Item 9L is Resolution 2014-96, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a high-visibility DUI enforcement grant. Item 9M is a Resolution 2014-97, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a grant supporting nighttime-enhanced seatbelt use. Item 9N is Resolution 2014-98, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and state of Colorado Department of Transportation for a grant supporting enhanced seatbelts. Item 9O, to accept the grant from the National League of Cities for Summer and After-School Meals Program. Item 9P is approve and authorize the mayor to sign the letter to the governor's oil and gas task force. Item 9Q is accept seven capital improvement amendments approved by the city manager. Item 9R is approve three capital improvement program amendments. These are PB87 Municipal Training Center, PB93 Civic Center Remodel Planning and Design, and PB153 Museum Auditorium Edition. Item 9S is appoint members to the Longmont Youth Council for the school year 2014-2015. And item 9T is ordinance 2014-65, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. And staff does not have a need to pull any items at this time.
Councilmember Bagley?
I assume others want to pull stuff, but I'd like to pull P and S.
Councilmember Bagley?
Unless somebody else wants to pull something, I would move the consent agenda minus P and S.
Okay. I'm going to pull C. Okay, so we've got a motion to approve the consent agenda minus P, S, and C.
P, S.
Hold on a second. All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, item C was the ordinance 2015-59 on the Vansbram Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel Four lease. Tim Barthes here.
Councilmember Christiansen?
Okay, so originally, we were going to, we grant, we approved having Iron Ridge out there, and it's been my understanding that they are having, that they don't have financing lined up. Okay. So then, but then, in the meantime, we had to grant several things, several changes for a week to be able to do that, and now we're being asked to approve another tenant that we don't really know much about.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Christiansen, I am correct in a kind of way. Yes, we originally had plans to do this with Iron Ridge, and we talked to the council about that back in March and April. And quite frankly, Iron Ridge has been moving through with us, with their contract that they have with the city for us to use their UAD, but they have been unable to secure their private financing in order to facilitate a move to the airport. In discussions with the lead aviation and from a management perspective at the airport, it doesn't make sense to just leave that building unoccupied because nobody's making revenue. UAS USA is not an unknown company. In fact, I got to give a little credit to Councilmember Santos and Assistant City Manager Sean Nurse, who actually met with them in April or May over in Boulder, and they had indicated a desire to relocate at that time, and it just so happened that they're here now. And it's a prominent company, they've got many UADS already on the market with the US government and universities.
So they would be moving all of their operation to Longmont?
To begin with, right now, they have the assembly and the retail sales, and they're moving, they're in the process of moving their manufacturing facility to Longmont.
And do they just manufacture drones?
Yes, they're a complete unmanned aerial vehicle system manufacturer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In fact, the day af, the night, the day after we had our presentation with Iron Ridge, I received an email from UAS USA and a phone call asking to meet with us, since I'm the council liaison to the airport board, to meet. And Sean and I met with them, I think, the next week, and we met them in Boulder, and they were looking for an opportunity to either stay in Boulder, the president of the company knows another council member in Boulder, but to either stay in Boulder or move their operation to Longmont. They, later on, they met with Wendy Nossinger, again with Sean and with Tim. They are considered a primary employer, which is fantastic to have that type of manufacturer at the airport. So I would encourage council, and I would move ordinance 2014-59.
It's been moved to second. Councilmember Levinson?
So do you know anything about the timescale to move those manufacturing jobs from California?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, in talking with Skip Miller over the past couple of weeks, we would like to be able to get this use approved by the 28th, and as soon as they can redesign the area that they're using now in order to facilitate the manufacturing of them, they would like to move that portion out here as soon as possible, so it's consolidated in one area. And just as a side note for the rest of council, UAS USA is already involved with CU. They provide one of their drones now, and in fact, in talking to CU, they are purchasing another one of their prototype drones. So they already have that relationship with CU. And I was just notified today that Metro State University in Denver, which has an aviation program, they have a UAD operational system down there for their students, and they have already contacted me about working with both Iron Ridge and UAS, so there's those ties as well.
I just have another question. Well, we have enough capacity. Should Iron Ridge have their financing come through? Is there enough capacity in this space to have both operations?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, at this time, no, there is not. It'll be a juggle to find them a place to operate should Iron Ridge come through with some financing. But we do have a little bit of space available if they get enough financing that they could build their own facility on the airport.
I just feel that sometimes it's difficult when we've already had established relationship where the convenience factor of them having the ability to manufacture and test on-site things that we have a contractual agreement to use to help them test, they're not going to be able to do that at the airport, which was the main point of us, you know, doing the contracts, I thought. And then here, we've got another company, and do we have a capacity with the FAA to add a second company?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, yes, we do have the capacity to add a second company. And as with UAS USA, we see that as a strong relationship with them as well as Iron Ridge. And if things keep progressing in the fashion that we are, especially with what I'm going to bring back to council on the 28th with the state designation for an aviation development zone, we very well could attract more of these types of industries to the airport. As far as testing them on the airport, we do have that agreement with Iron Ridge now. I would be willing to look at those same parameters for UAS USA, providing that we do it at times where it does not conflict with our normal traffic operations.
Yeah, glad to see you're thinking that way. And then the, all the sales and use taxes that would be generated would be City of Longmont revenue, general fund revenue, right?
That is correct. And in fact, the first thing we did, by the way, I just wanted to throw this out. to throw this out, uh, it's kind of like yanking our own chain here, but the City of Longmont turned this around within 72 hours, and we moved quick in order to get them on here so that they would not have to find another community to go to. That's how badly we wanted them. Now, to answer your question directly.
Pretty much turned back the waters of the, the river in 72 hours too, so, I mean, you know, you're talking biblical proportions. We have experience.
Well, it's, correct. And, uh, as soon as we had them on the airport, the first thing I did was have them go down to the finance department and apply for a City of Longmont Sales and Use Tax License, so we're ready to move forward with them.
I, for, for council's information, I've also had conversations with the principal of Iron Ridge about this very issue, and, and they understood it, and, and now they're continuing to work on, on their own issues, and, and indicated they will continue, uh, the working relationship with the city. So I just wanted to point that out that I have had those conversations.
Mayor, if I can add one additional item, to clarify councilmember Levinson's question, Iron Ridge can still operate and will still operate the airport without being located there. So we can still utilize their services without them being located on premises.
Okay, we've got an ordinance, um, motion to approve, and that's conservative, that's good. Here, passes seven to zero.
Councilmember Allen.
Are we ready to go on to the others?
Yep.
Uh, I guess the, uh, the only thing, the reason why I pulled the S is, uh, if, if you found out.
He is the next item.
Sorry, say it again?
He is the next.
Well, the S was easier. I just figured we'd get that out of the way, but I'll do it over here, is wrong. You know, P first, S later, yes. So the, uh, but S, since it was me pulling consent agenda, so for those of you who thought I was being mean to the nice lady, or the nice girl from, uh, the one named Bagley, yeah, there, there's, there's a relation there. That's my daughter. And you'll notice that she's on the list of, uh, people being appointed to the youth council. Um, if it was a competitive position and there were other people that were going to be vying for positions, I would remove myself, but since there's not, I would like to vote for her and the others to show my support as I did last year. Well, right, but my point is that if, in, in case there's any, uh, accusations of favoritism, absolutely, and, uh, I'm going to vote anyway. Oh, so with that, I move that we appoint members to the Longmont Youth Council for the school year 2014-2015 as presented. Thank you.
It's been moving second. I want to write on that. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
So my, and then P now?
Yeah.
Are we sure? You're good on P?
We're good on P.
Okay.
Councilmember Levinson.
All right, okay, I just, yes, yes, I'm sure. We're going to do this one. So my question is simply, um, uh, for our legal staff, Mr. May, and that is, how will this letter impact our lawsuits? That's what you call a softball question, Eugene. May, I'm counsel Eugene Lay, city attorney. Well, um, you, I'm going to steal my own thunder. I was going to make comments in the city attorney comments section. Uh, but I'm, I'm pleased to report today, uh, that this is perhaps Longmont's finest moment in oil and gas issues in the past three years. Uh, today, the city filed on behalf of all the parties in the Longmont One regs case, a stipulated dismissal of all claims and covenant not to sue. This is a great outcome for the community of Longmont. What this means is that the CLGCC and COGA agreed never to sue Longmont again with a challenge to our oil and gas regs. Uh, coupled with our top operating master contract covenant not to sue, staff is confident our regs will remain in place and foreseeable for the foreseeable future. As a result, Longmont has secured important protections for our community, including no drilling in our neighborhoods, mandatory groundwater monitoring, setbacks from riparian areas, and other protections. So to answer your question, that, that was my statement there. Not an answer to your question. Um, we, we are still awaiting, uh, the court's order approving the stipulated dismissal, uh, but if all parties to a case stipulate to dismiss, the court is going to enter that order in short time. So I don't think it will have any, um, impact on our regs case. Uh, in terms of our fracking prohibition case, as you know, we've appealed. We filed our notice of appeal, identified the issues we're going to raise. Uh, the record is set in that case. Uh, this letter, I think, to me, is just raising our hand to the governor's commission and saying, hey, local governments have an interest here. We want to be heard. I don't think there's anything specific in here that's going to impact negatively our fracking appeal. Thank you, Mr. May. Um, there was a, uh, Ms. Fissinger, uh, who, uh, spoke during the public invited to be heard comments. I know that she, uh, has a personal vested interest in this, and I respect her comments, um, but I also believe that we need to continue to, everybody knows Longmont's in the game, so we might as well keep pushing forward in order to make our voices heard. So, uh, I would actually move that we, uh, approve and authorize the mayor to sign a letter to the governor's oil and gas task force as mentioned in P. Thank you, as presented on our desks.
Favorite statement, and second by Councilmember Levinson? All right, let's go around it. Okay, that passes six to zero. The council will move the city.
The next item is the last item, actually.
Yeah. Now, do you know business or what's time for phone call, public invited to be heard? Did you make, like, the address to cancel at this time? All right, now, close phone call, public invited to be heard. And I'll start with Mayor and Council comments.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Coons. I want to have a business of the week, as I do every week. My business this week is House of Q, the new barbecue place at the Best Western Plaza Hotel, 1900 Ken Pratt Boulevard. I believe it's a Smoke and Dave's barbecue, but they call it House of Q, and I'm sure it's delicious.
Councilmember Levinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, let's see. I just wanted to take a minute, and, um, we, we passed with no controversy and no comment the grant that we received from National League of Cities to help support, uh, an effort to feed kids after school and in the summer. And, um, I just wanted to acknowledge the hard work of staff members who got that grant together, and, um, and that we were able to get the grant, which I love the way that staff has, um, gotten programs we're already doing in the community with the library services and other after-school activities, and, um, uh, we had now have an effort to, uh, an, an ability to help those kids that are really hungry, um, get a meal and, um, get some educational enrichment at the same time. Feed the, the body and feed the mind. So I think it's a, a great way to do the program, and, um, I look forward to, uh, talking to people about our, our success in the future. Um, I also want to mention that we've got the LAEC breakfast coming up on Thursday morning, and we're going to have staff members talking about a gas long run, and, uh, hope everybody's been able to get their schedules lined up to attend. Um, CMR Policy Committee is coming up this Friday, and, um, I'll be attending Policy Committee and have, I will have a short report back, um, probably next week.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coons. Uh, coffee with councils this Saturday at Cafe Luna. Myself and Councilmember Christiansen will be there at nine o'clock at 800 Coffin Street. Look forward to seeing people there.
Councilmember Allen. Thank you, Mayor Coons. I just, uh, kind of my, my last vote to not approve, uh, signing on to this letter. I just think it's just totally, um, acknowledging that this, that any, anyone that ever come out of this commission that will actually lead to anything that's good for cities. And that's why I don't believe in, uh, that this was a, a good move for Longmont. Longmont's been on their own for the most part of this, uh, oil and gas, these oil and gas issues, and all of a sudden everybody else wants to jump in the game, and, um, quite frankly, I just think it's window dressing for the governor to put this out there, and it's, uh, that's why I voted no. Thank you. Well, I think a shout out to Shana Kewell, County Governor, Fitness Champion. She does a good job in trying to promote health and fitness for our city, and, uh, so I really appreciate that, uh, she's, she does. Um, and this is last weekend, uh, there was a race, a five-year race for, uh, against domestic violence that, uh, barbecue, uh, actually related, and, uh, there's a lot of, I saw a lot of police officers there, uh, the race, and it's first time we do it, and I think it's going to be a great event in the future. So I just, I can, um, say thanks for all the people who came and supported that race. Um, we also had a local Lakeview Creek Park on Saturday. It's a wonderful park, um, another place to take my dad for, for a walk along that path, and, uh, so a lot of great things are happening in the City of Longmont, so, thank you. Um, I guess, uh, must be the council members, so, uh, signature or no objection or remarks?
Uh, no comments, Mayor Council.
Okay, signature, you do the remarks.
Mayor Council, I did forget to mention Montana on Longmont Two, our fracking prohibition case. Uh, today, the court granted the city's motion for state pending appeal. Uh, that means that the fracking prohibition will stay in place during the appellate process. Uh, also want to recognize, uh, the city team and the great work that they did in the Longmont One regs case. We had a lot of support from city council, past and present. Uh, public works in natural resources, city manager's office. This was really a, a team effort, and want to acknowledge them also.
Awesome. So, uh, crack race and breakfast, thank you.
That was Professor Danny Kramer was doing that. I'd probably pull something if I tried that, but we are very pleased with the outcome.
Councilmember Allen, and there was, and so, what, do you want to explain a little bit about what the court did with the requested bond? With, I, I just, I don't know if it was a typo, but do you want to explain that?
Uh, so in, uh, Longmont Two Fracking Prohibition Case, there is a, a provision that requires a bond, uh, on appeal from the parties appealing. The environmental intervenors were also appealing the, uh, fracking prohibition, some judgment ruling. Uh, top operator, one of the intervener defendants, uh, requested that the environmental interveners post a $20 million supercity bond. Um, they attach an affidavit from one of their executives making conclusory statements about the lost profits and the profitability of their operations. Uh, the court did not buy those, um, arguments and instead set the bond at $100.
Interesting.
All right, it's me, Mr. John.